Okay, we'll call the meeting of the zoning board to order. And we have a roll call, please.
Ms. Chester.
Here.
Mr. Cho. Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Yutman.
Yes.
Mr. Warmbrun.
Here.
Mr. Weiskopf. Mr. Welch.
Here. I believe we do have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda? Well, at this time then, we'll deal with the minutes from the last month. Well, not last month, but from the last meeting. I assume everyone got their copy? Has everybody had time to review? Anybody notice any errors or anything they want corrected? Then we entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the draft for the minutes of September 20th, 2017.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed by the same sign. That motion then carries. At this time, I will swear in anyone that desires to speak.
You might ask a question.
Do you swear affirm to the best of your ability that any testimony you give tonight would be true and accurate?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Are there any written communications?
No.
Any continued public hearing? Then at that time, or at this time, then I will call the matters for hearing for this evening. The first is case number ZBA 2017 C-02. A request for a conditional use permit by the City of Urbana to allow the use of a municipal or government building at 1210 East University Avenue in the AG Agricultural Zoning District.
Just a point of correction, I'm sorry. This case was actually advertised two different times because it has multiple addresses. So, the address that is matching with the memo is the 1907 East Perkins address. However, technically, that parcel does have 1210 East University Avenue also as an address. But 1907 is a bit more descriptive as to where this building might be.
What is that again, 1907?
1907 Perkins.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Do we have a staff report?
One moment. So, the application is by the City of Urbana. It's a request for a conditional use permit to allow a municipal or government building at 1907 East Perkins Road in the AG Agriculture Zoning District. The subject property has several different addresses, but this one is probably the most accurate. The site, section 53C, I'm sorry. Wrong notes. I'm sorry. Table 5 of the zoning ordinance, table of uses, requires that a municipal or government building in the AG District must seek a conditional use permit. This site is located in generally the north part of Urbana on public land owned by the city. It's, I'll first give a brief description of the area. It's 1.2 acres roughly of a much larger site that's 45.46 acres as well. It's owned by the city, used for mainly its vacant land, but also used as material storage by the city's Public Works Department. It's zoned AG Agriculture. To the north, there are several single-family households that are in the county R3 two-family residence zoning. Towards the east, there's more city AG property owned by the city. It's wooded area. There's also Interstate 94, or I'm sorry, Interstate 74. Towards the south is the same of city AG on the subject property, which is more wooded area and outdoor material storage. Towards the west is a single-family home that is technically in the county zoned AG1 The future land use designation for this area is parks. Further to the south, you'll see is industrial. And towards the north is rural residential and multifamily residential. A little further past that. So, the proposal is for a municipal or government building that would be 4,000 square feet, be 80 feet long by 50 foot wide, made of kind of a pole barn design. It's intended for storage, for use for various city departments. For, you know, in the future, to allow consolidation of several sites within the city to a more permanent site that is owned and operated by the city, that is on city property. The location of this building would be just off of Perkins Road on the far north part of the subject property. You'll see that it is set back from the road. It's set back 65 feet from the public right-of-way. It's set back 100 feet from the property line with that single-family household to the The building would provide 13 parking spaces for the building as required in the zoning ordinance. The access to the building and the parking lot would be from an existing access road you'll see on the far east side of the property. That's an access driveway that comes off of Perkins Road. It's a private drive, but it's an existing driveway that would provide the access to the building. So, the, in the analysis of the proposed building and the site, it should be noted that this building is largely isolated and sort of secluded from heavy concentrations of commercial or residential areas. It's on a large site that can accommodate such a use without much disruption to its current use of the outdoor material storage or to any large neighborhood. It's located on property that will be used by the city indefinitely and owned by the city indefinitely. It's located sort of right next to a major highway to where it would only be, and, you know, property that's owned by the city and used by the city further to the south, so it would not be sending, it would be sending little disruption to any of the surrounding area. And the site already has generous amounts of vegetation and trees to provide some sort of visual screening. The property still would be required to have screening for its off-street parking area, but that would only be towards the north from the public right-of-way. So, according to section 72, the conditional use permit shall demonstrate the following: the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at that location. It's a rather, it's on, sitting on property. It's a rather large property that can accommodate a use that's already consistent with its current use. The second question, that the proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will be, so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it shall be located, otherwise injurious to the public welfare. Is our finding that that is the case. It's rather isolated from most public neighborhoods, and it has, is provided with, you know, surroundings that will allow it to fit in without disrupting many nearby properties with, you know, the properties to the south and the interstate highway and the trees and the foliage that surround it as well. And also, the use would mostly be small meeting space and lots of storage, not any significant daily activities. Third question, that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards of and preserves the essential character of the district in which it shall be located, except for where such regulations and standards are modified by section 76 of the zoning ordinance. The proposed use would conform to all applicable regulations and preserve the essential character of the district. It doesn't change the current use or the current state of that property from being an agricultural, you know, vacant property with lots of vacant land or, you know, vegetation growth. The construction of the building would not really, would not disrupt the open space of storage areas currently used on the property. So, the conditional use permit may be granted based on the findings in the memo. It could be granted with conditions. If the board elects to add conditions, they should articulate findings accordingly. They may deny the conditional use. If so, they should also articulate the findings supporting this denial. Staff, we would like to make an adjustment to one of the conditions that's listed in the memorandum for the staff recommendation, so I'll state that verbally. The staff recommendation is to grant the proposed conditional use permit in ZBA 2017 C-02 with the condition that the building generally conforms with the site plan and renderings in exhibit D and E of this, respectively, of this application, and that the second condition, there is landscaping and screening for the off-street parking area as required by the zoning ordinance.
And could you define what exhibit D and E is in the packet since we missed the labels on those?
Certainly. So, exhibit D is the overhead map after the exhibit C, it's this future land use map. Exhibit D is the site plan that shows an aerial overhead with the space that would be taken up by the proposed building with its parking area. Exhibit E is that rendering of what the building would look like up close on the page afterwards.
Are there any questions for staff? Go ahead.
I just have one question. I see the area to the south is labeled heavy industrial.
For the future land use.
Will this, how will the access be to this heavy industrial use area if it is ever developed? And will this structure prevent such access or be in the way?
I think it'd be very unlikely that the structure would block access to the south. For one, access to that, to the area would cross, would have to crouch the saline drainage ditch. I think access to that property would mostly come off of the University Avenue further to the south. Also, you'll see that this building is still kind of mostly in the northwestern portion of the property. It's not getting anywhere close to that existing access drive towards the east. It's not, if there were access off of Perkins Road, it's not creating an impediment for creation of any access point. It's a rather small building in comparison to the rest of the properties. So, in my opinion, I don't think it would impede any access for any potential industrial use to the south.
No. The reason I ask is that at a previous meeting, there was a proposal to build something in an industrial area which would bring traffic past the mobile home park. And so, I'm just wondering down the road, you know, if you do develop at that area, how, what will the access be then?
I'll also point out that as a pole barn, this is not an extensive building to take down, should it be needed to be taken down. So, is that a fair assessment? I mean, it's a pretty easy building to go up, pretty easy building to come down, should there be a major industrial development that would need access from Perkins. But I, whereas that is designated as industrial in the long-range plan or the comprehensive plan, that is a really long-range plan, I think, at this location, so.
Right. I guess I'm just thinking it'd be better to build the pole barn, even though it might not be terribly expensive, in a way that would not require in the future that it be demolished or in the way of some kind of access to what you're calling heavy industrial. Also, I drove out there. I'm just curious. Is that a storage pit for gravel asphalt right now?
There are some piles of materials that are, various materials that are used by our, the city's Public Works Department and for just, for storage. I think one of them is for C10 gravel. I wasn't, one or two mulch, I think, was another material, and just several materials used by Public Works for their various operations.
Okay, I guess I'm wondering the opposite. Why we aren't building this building closer to the access road and farther away from the people's property? Do we have like 100 feet of drive we're having before we get to the parking lot? I'm just looking at this site plan.
Are you asking why the building has not moved closer, or excuse me, farther east? Or are you looking at north-south?
Yes, farther east. Why we would have 100-foot access drive that we would have to build there. I don't know if that is 100 feet, but it's kind of close to what the other dimension is. You following me there?
Yeah. I would note that there, the, there's a city employee who might be able to answer that question further if he elects to speak, but I would point out that there are lots of large vehicles that still access that access road on the side that would need a good level of clearance. So, that's probably why the, you know, to provide a good, safe off-street parking space, but also provide, you know, a wide, you know, distance off the access road so vehicles can have visibility and safely move in and off, you know, on and off the property.
Well, it seems to me if we had that problem with the amount of traffic, that we would put in a new access road that was wider and flatter and better drainage and things. But, all right, so, forget that then. So, I'm assuming that exhibit E, the building, the garage doors will be facing south because of the way the exhibit D looks? And then you say we're going to put a fence or a buffer up on the north side of the parking lot?
Yes, depending on, most likely because the vegetation along the road is, are trees that are not, do not maintain their foliage through the winter, so.
And what we would, we're assuming that we're not going to use this parking lot at all unless there is a meeting in the small meeting room? Is that correct? We just have to put the number of spaces in there because of the code?
Number of spaces in because of the code and the screening for any residential use as required in the ordinance.
And really, we're not, according to this, we are not going to take out any trees or anything, right? This area that it's in is all wide-open space right now.
Yeah, you'll see in some of the site photos, it's.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I'm just curious about this little area called a park, that little odd-shaped area. Is that?
Are you referring to, can you help me understand if you're referring to the future land use or?
Well, yes.
That's the, that's a future land use designation for, for that part of the property. It doesn't necessarily reflect the current use.
Is it right now owned by somebody?
I'm not sure that we're talking about all the same area.
It's this little area.
There is a dog park there, yes, if that's what you're referring to.
This little thing right here, next to the interstate? Because it's colored, the color of green, like a park.
I just think it's, if you look at the area, you can see it's just part of that wooded area, and probably at some point, there was a parcel designation for that. And it's just, there's no reason to take it away.
I see. A nasty joke can come in by a chance. I'm just curious. Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions for staff? Is anyone in favor of the petition that would like to be heard? Do you have any questions for the board or any questions?
Any questions for me?
Any questions?
I guess one thing, if it is the board's desire, if the building could move to the east and they were able to accommodate that, is that the board's desire?
Not necessarily.
I would just, I just would like to know the reasoning that we need to build however long, 100-foot thing to get to the parking lot, that we have to plow and we have to do all this stuff if it could be.
Come on up then.
Wait, we got procedures here. You have to sign in and state your name.
Let me sign in.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Norton. To answer the question about building the road.
You're a city employee, right?
Yes.
Why don't you identify your title?
I work for the police department.
All right, thank you.
So, in looking at, if you had, I don't know how to put up the aerial photo. You can't really zoom in there. But if you can see along, I guess what would be the south edge where the road comes in on the east edge, and right where the two black lines are, is actually a road. There's actually a road there along that tree line that you really can't see from this aerial photo. Public Works, yes. Public Works currently uses this lot for field dirt. And what their plan is, is to scrape that field dirt off to make a stack of field dirt next to the road. So, essentially, we're wanting to move the building back to accommodate their field dirt. This is just a big storage lot, is what it is.
So, this road would remain gravel paved then, or?
What they actually have out there is an abundance of millings, road millings, that we would recycle and actually use that to put over the top to harden up the road. So, you know, they're, what they have is what we're going to use.
There are no additional questions? Thank you. Any additional comment from staff in light of the testimony? No. Any additional comments or questions from the board? And I believe we're ready to call the motion and the question. However, did you get all of his additional conditions?
Yes, and would you like him to restate it?
Yes, I would.
One moment, please.
Because I believe that's what the staff now wants us to vote on. So, yes, I would like.
That's correct.
To be restated.
Recommendation of granting the proposed conditional use permit in case ZBA 2017 C-02 for the reasons articulated above with the following conditions: the building generally conforms with the site plan and renderings in exhibit D and exhibit E respectively. And the second condition, that there is landscaping and screening for the off-street parking area as required by the zoning ordinance.
I believe for the record, those would actually be conditions three and four now, correct? We already have one and two.
The one that I stated to be, that you would be calling condition three, the one stating the building generally conforms with the site plan and renderings in exhibit D and exhibit E respectively, was intended to replace the first one.
I see.
And what you had just described as number four was?
Replacement of two.
Well, restating of number two, so.
Restating, all right. And I believe now then, the, all right, go ahead then.
What, replace number two? Nothing?
Nothing, it's the same.
It wasn't really replaced. It's, number two is the same.
Restatement. That's why I said now we're going to call for vote the recommendations as amended today.
We need a motion first.
Yes.
Okay, let me try this, please.
All right.
All right, that we, that the Board of Appeals grant the proposed conditional use permit in case ZBA 2000 C-02 for the reasons articulated above and following conditions. Number one, the building generally conforms with the renderings and the renderings in exhibit D and E and the specifications in the memorandum, ZBA 2000 C-02 submitted in this application. Number two, there is landscaping and screening for the off-street parking area as required by the zoning ordinance. And the word respectively went in there somewhere.
Okay. I think we made a mistake.
We did.
Because you said 2000, not 2017.
Oh, did I? Okay.
And actually, the intention, sorry to interrupt. The intention of the condition was to take out all of that extra stuff about the memo. We don't need it if you do exhibit D and exhibit E.
I see.
How about number one, the building generally conforms with the renderings and the site plan in exhibit D and E respectively. And then number two, there's landscaping and screening for the off-street parking areas required by the zoning ordinance?
Just to quickly note that the site plan is exhibit D and the renderings are exhibit E, but otherwise, yes, so, okay.
All right, and it's now been moved. Do we have a second?
Let me do this by the way, if I can remember.
I have this register sheet, so let's do roll call, shall we?
All right. Yeah, I think so.
All right. Ms. Chester.
Yes.
Ms. Yutman.
Yes.
Mr. Warmbrun.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes, at motion carries. And since it's conditional use, there's no further action that need to be taken, needs to be taken. All right. I now call for hearing case ZBA 2017-C-03. And before, before the staff report, the petitioner is not here and informed city staff that they would not be in attendance. Does the board still want to hear this? Do, does the board still want to hear this without them?
Yes.
Yep, no?
Not really.
You don't?
Do you have any idea what the site plan for this would be? Did they submit any of that?
Yeah, they submitted a site plan. They, they did give plenty of details about their application and enough information that we felt comfortable of making a recommendation with conditions and so forth. The applicants didn't, we, we didn't find out until late that they were out of, going to be out of the country for the holidays. So, they, they tried to find a representative that could speak for them, but being close, close to the holidays is obviously challenging for a family member or a friend, they, possibly the contractor, but that wasn't able to work out. So, they would be, they would be happy to, if the board did hear the case and requested further information, they, the applicants indicated, they were more than willing and happy to provide that information at a continued meeting if that were the case.
In light of the time of the year, um, do you think that all that much would get done if we had this meeting before the 17th of January anyway?
They're not going to be pouring concrete for a foundation anytime soon. I think the applicant would appreciate just as much, just the, the applicant wanted to seek the permit first so they can move forward with more detailed construction plans and expenditures of planning the construction, so perhaps the board could consider at least hearing the case and if they decide, if you all decide that there is no further information needed, that it could hypothetically be approved tonight. If you decided that you would rather, you know, hear it next month regardless of, you know, regardless of what the applicants are, because, mainly because of the fact that they're not here, they can accommodate that too. We, we did inform them that it's, it's best to have a representative or the applicants, you know, here to represent the application, but, you know, we, we said it's ultimately up to the board chair to determine what, what should happen with the case in the absence of their representation.
Well, not willing to assume too much power. I would, again, like to hear from the board if, because I am of the opinion that I would just like them to be here. I think that's important when we're considering their petition, let me amend that. That the petitioner are a representative to be here in case questions arise, but just for the fact that that's kind of what this is all about, their petition. But I will welcome the input from the rest of the board. Yes.
Procedurally, can't any board member ask that this be continued? Is that the way we go, I think, if I remember right about the bylaws?
Yeah, the bylaws say something to the effect of it's really up to you whether or not you want to hear it or not.
Right. That's, that's why I was.
And is it, it's not even a vote, though, is it?
I don't, I don't think it's a vote. I can see if I've got it.
I don't think it's a vote either, but.
I, I personally, we have to hear it since we're here.
But if we're not going to decide anything, and then the next meeting when we go to decide it, some other people might be here, and we might not, we might not.
Right, I could not.
Right.
And you already said you would rather not.
I'd rather not do it. It is a major change, I mean, it is a major change to that lot. It is a lot, become a dwelling.
And while you have a site plan, you know, these site plans are like aerial pictures and stuff, I, once again, I like to know where the doors are and the openings and accesses on, you know, we could assume that the garage door is going to be on the south of the property, but, you know, we don't know that for fact unless.
It sounds like maybe they don't want you to do it.
Yeah, I mean, cause it said it was 300, cause of 300 feet for the garage and 1,100 for the dwelling, and it's single, single floor, which is interesting.
I think.
Why don't we just continue?
I think, I think that I'm getting the vibe that we would really like to have them Just if for no, someone here, if for no other reason than to answer any possible questions.
And I think really, the intent of when we did those bylaws, whenever it was, six, seven years ago, the intent was there, if the person didn't show up, that we had the ability to dismiss the case, if for some reason the board deemed that, or we could just continue. So, if we continued it, they didn't have to repay the fees and refile and everything, which was like a courtesy, so.
I think that if you go through, through the whole thing, we're going to have questions.
Then, then I've heard enough now, I will make, make an executive decision that I'm going to move that, that this particular case, ZBA 2017 dash C dash O three be continued until our meeting of January the 17th, 2018. No, I don't think so. No, no, she just asked, we're going to vote on that, and I said I don't think that was necessary. We have any old business. We have new business.
At one of the previous meetings, it, there was an inquiry on whether or not the board would want to consider a change in the start of the meeting time from 7:30 PM to 7:00 PM. I prepared a very short memo indicating that that would be helpful from a staff perspective and with our compensatory time and whatnot, but there's no bylaws change that's required. The, I think the language in the bylaws state, "Regular meetings shall be held at a time and day to be agreed upon from time to time by the board." So, you may discuss.
Does there any discussion of this?
I like 7:00.
All right.
Somebody move that then, you believe?
Might as well, let's be official about it.
All right. Regarding the matter of the proposal to change the meeting time of our board meetings, do we have a motion?
Yes, I mean, that the future of the board meetings begin at 7:00.
Do we have a second to that? Any discussion? Call that for, no? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, by the same sign? That motion carries then commencing with the meeting of January the 17th, 2018, the start time for Urbana zoning board of appeals meetings will be 7:00 PM. We have no audience, so there's obviously no audience participation. Is there a staff report? Study session?
No.
Then I move that we adjourn for 2017.